And we are recording the call. Who is going to give us an update on our back to school plan? But first of all, welcome our new superintendent. We are very excited that you are here.
Thank you. It's nice to finally be here. This has been much shorter than anticipated, but I'm very, very happy to be here. And I have to say that on my third day here in district, the people of Cedar Grove have been wonderful. This is very helpful, very welcoming, and I look forward to a wonderful relationship with everybody. I know that this is an extremely important day for all of our families and caregivers in our town based on what has happened since March. And the development of what continues to happen in our state and throughout the world gives us a moment for pause to really truly understand and see the fluctuation of what will continue to happen for quite some time. But the goal of tonight is to present a plan that has been thought out with multiple stakeholders within our community, staff, families, township personnel, healthcare providers. And after our presentation tonight, this plan will be presented to everybody, to the public on our website. So what my goal tonight is, is to walk you through this plan. The plan is around 30 plus pages. I will not read every piece of this plan, but I'm going to highlight particular pieces of this plan that are very important and it will help guide you as you read through this on your own. After tonight's presentation, I highly encourage everyone to take the time to really go through this and really make an educated, conscious decision on what your plans are for your children. Hopefully, this plan will help to answer a lot of the questions. Our surveys that we sent out earlier in July really shared with all of us that families do want to go back to have their children go back to school. Staff had said that they want to go back to school, but making sure that everybody goes back to school in a healthy and safe environment. So I would like to get started and walk you through. It is very important that, like I said before, before we move forward, that this plan is subject to change. And as we go through this, we'll notice in the overview, and I'm going to walk you through this in just one moment as we go down. That's all right. While we're just moving through with the actual plan is that in the overview section, it shares that this document is to be expected to make revisions accordingly. And as we could see this week alone, that there was a change in our state based on the populations of who can gather in particular areas. So we will continue to do that and update this. Our goal also is that within the next week, that there will be a website available for everybody. And that website will just pertain to the return to school and how that will change for our... Sorry.
Yeah, let's keep getting...
Sorry.
We're going to get an update every time somebody else tries to... That we've hit the capacity, so just hit OK and you can move on.
All right. So as we look at this, when I move down here, these are a listing of all of our district personnel, our staff, our community stakeholders who have helped to conduct the plan. When you do get the copy of this plan, I want everybody to be aware that this is pretty lofty and that you will be able to access sections by clicking on the areas noted that will bring you directly to those sections that will help guide you in case you have particular questions on those areas. So let's go down to our... Oops, beginning section here. So our overview of the purpose of this plan.
I know I should have brought a...
That's OK. The purpose of this plan here is that we want to provide the ability to maintain a safe and healthy school environment. And we want to continue the evaluation of factors that will fluctuate the transmission of the disease over the next several months. And we have to be very careful and we have to be very cautious as we move forward because things could possibly change. So the first piece that I'd like to go through is the safety and the health of returning. And these are entrance protocols. Now, I'm not going to necessarily go through every piece of that because there is duplications based on other protocols. But we have visitors, staff, and students. So something that is extremely important for us to notice is that all persons and, you know, prior to the governor mandating and the CDC mandating that masks be mandatory for staff and students, this was in our plan. And so we are mandating that all visitors, staff, and students wear masks. If they don't have masks for our visitors, they will be asked to leave. We must practice social distancing protocols. And please note that anytime you see in this plan a blue hyperlink that will bring you to the CDC or another location which will provide extended information. We will also share that, you know, people will be six feet apart and that includes front, back, and side to side. We are also urging that if somebody in their household that was experiencing something, they rest before a long time that they do not go and enter the building. These are visitors appearing with everybody as well as everybody will be screened upon arrival. And that will be a non-contact thermometer that will be used as well as a temperature. If it's exceeding 100.4 degrees, that particular individual will not be included within the building.
Thank you.
Also, as we go down to this, especially for visitors, especially for visitors, we... If a visitor is entering the building, say if it is a parent or caregiver, they will not have access to move around the building. They will be in a waiting area that will be sanctioned for you just to stay there at that moment in time because we do not want to increase the contact of any of the possibilities of the spread and transmission of any type of illness. For staff, we look at staff. Staff has a very similar protocol. Staff will be wearing masks or if they so choose, this is an option for staff, they may wear a mask with a face shield. Social distancing protocols continue as well as anybody in their household with symptoms, including the screenings will be taking place. And if a staff member is identified as testing positive, the district will immediately notify our health officials. And our health officials in our local offices as well as our county offices have been extremely helpful as they have reviewed this document as well, making sure that we have all of the protocols and procedures up to task. For our students, our students will have the same protocols, masks, social distancing. But if you look down here, there are symptoms of students that would cause us to perhaps make us aware that they may be exhibiting symptoms that could possibly be a COVID, but it could possibly be not. Because if you look at these symptoms such as chills or sore throat or fatigue, these are common symptoms among students. So we want to be very vigilant with that and we will be in close contact with our local health departments as we do find students who develop these symptoms. Students will enter front, enter six feet apart, front, back, side to side.
A lot of people.
But this is... But this is something that I want to share with everybody. Students... We're just going to mute. Maybe somebody just got on. OK. So when we look at students or someone in the household, they should remain in isolation if they have been tested positive for COVID. And this is something that just recently changed. There would be at least 10 days have passed since the symptoms first appeared and at least one day or 24 hours with no fever. And that's without use of a fever reducing medication and improvement of symptoms. And then we look at anybody if they are close contact with someone with COVID. And I will get to that and tell you exactly what that means as we move forward. They should self-quarantine for 14 days to the last exposure. We will also look at each school will be providing individual entrance plans. And if there needs to be stagger times, it will be something that we would review with the plan. I want to talk to everybody about screening stations. And those screening stations are... Each person will be screened upon entering the building. As they arrive, again, it will be with non-contact thermometers and any temperature exceeding 104, 100.4. Please note that entrances into the building will not look the way they have in the past. At our elementary levels, we have multiple entrances that go into a large portion of our classrooms that go into the individual classrooms. And as well as the middle and the high school, we'll be using multiple entrances to reduce the amount of traffic flow and exposure and contact with other people. As we move forward with facilities, cleaning, and procedures, we have developed cleaning procedures for our buildings along with checklists, along with electrostatic disinfectants. If you notice here, I want to concentrate on this area. This is daily and sometimes multiple times during the day. When we look at, these are our high-touch areas that will be used frequently in a building. And these are the areas that will be sanitized multiple times during the day based upon the frequency of access. Each Friday, and I'll share with everybody in a few moments the schedule, each Friday, each building will undergo a more concentrated, detailed cleansing of the entire building. And on this Friday, this is when we will go as a district fully remote. It is essential for our staff and our students to enter a building that is clean and sanitized. And especially when we have our next grouping of students that would come into the building that following week, it gives that Friday that deeper cleansing as well as two days for any type of pathogens to be reduced. We do use EPA-registered disinfectants and the information can be found in that link. And here are some of our cleaning products that we do use during our cleansing times. If somebody does get sick, that area will be closed off. The area will also, we will also be notifying our local health department. And that area, it may not be feasible. It will be a wait time for 24 hours for cleaning or disinfecting. And if 24 hours is not feasible, we may wait as long as possible for the disinfecting of that area. Hand sanitation. This area is important because it is going to be one of the key components of keeping our schools and our students and staff safe. Each, a lot of our classrooms at the elementary levels have sinks. So that is an excellent source of sanitizing someone's hands. But for those areas that do not, we will have hand sanitizing stations. The activities that will take place when you would sanitize your hand would be at the beginning of each day upon entering the building. When we talk about before snack or lunch, that would be... I will talk about lunch because we will not be serving lunch, but that would be something anytime we're trying to steer away from any type of food components during the day. But after using the restroom, after sneezing or blowing someone's nose, blowing their nose, or re-entering the classroom for any reason. And recess would count as a physical education area. Also, stations will be at the entrances and exits of the buildings, lunchroom areas as well as restrooms. When we talk about circulation, it is a key component, keeping the circulation of air in each of the classrooms. Windows will be open to increase that circulation. Of course, when it's safe and weather permitting. Classroom doors will remain open at all times as well as if there is an air conditioner. If the room is equipped with an air conditioner, that air conditioner can be used with a fresh component provided. But windows will remain open if an air conditioner is not equipped. Seating in a classroom will be six feet apart with a desk. It will be arranged where the desk will be six feet apart, front, back, and side to side. Close group learning like carpet time or reading circles, those will not be a practice that we will continue as of now. So we will not be facing students face to face unless there is some sort of partition that would prohibit that from happening. If there is a room that cannot be utilized based on the amount of students and including the staff member, then we will look for alternate settings in the school building. And that can be a cafeteria, a gym, an auditorium, a large group instruction area, et cetera. Sharing of objects, which is something that's very common, especially for our younger students. Unfortunately, that will be prohibited in our classrooms as we move forward. And this is to reduce the amount of contact time. Books, pens, pencils, creative play items, technology of electronic devices and manipulatives, they will no longer be shared with our students in our classrooms. If an item had to be shared, we will design a cleaning procedure and it will be established. Students will be required to bring their own personal items to school each week, such as their pencils and pens and crayons and so forth. If they are to keep that in the room, those should be labeled and packed away so other students would not be able to use that. When we look at school supplies, our lists are already up on our individual school website pages. But one of the new additions to that this year will be each student will be required to bring two masks. And the reason for that is, especially for our younger students, if something happens to that mask, if a mask breaks, if a mask rips, there will be another mask there. We also will be, we also have prepared each school building if there is a need for a mask for one of our students or our staff members that we will be able to provide them. This won't be something that we can do on an ongoing basis every day, but we will be able to provide that. And we've also ordered pediatric masks for our younger children because the larger masks don't necessarily fit the way that they are intended to for our younger children. So those will also be available. When we look at traffic flow throughout a building, that may change from building to building to reduce the amount of traffic flow and contact. There will be signage posted if that is a change. That includes hallways and stairwells. There may be up and down stairwells. There may be one-way hallways, but this is to reduce that. And we also have to look at as we enter the main offices and the nursing offices of our buildings, they may be strategically structured in a very different way based on the ability to reduce the contact for our staff and our visitor or our students. If a visitor is needing to sign or sign papers, this is important. We will not be providing pens. It will be something that you will have to bring there because we do not want to continue the usage of that item. We look at restrooms. Restrooms are a highly functional area of the school. We will be disinfecting those areas frequently throughout the day. We were having ongoing conversations with our buildings and grounds crew. Mario and John have been absolutely outstanding through this entire process. They've been extremely proactive and I'm very appreciative of that. Students will be taught proper hand washing techniques. That will be part of the teachers' expectations and protocols when they are talking with your students in the beginning of the school year as well as when they would normally share their expectations. But now hand washing techniques and the utilization of bathrooms and restrooms would be the same, would now be included in this. CDC posters will be in all of those areas promoting proper hand washing techniques and proper socially, social distancing procedures within the bathrooms. Those bathrooms will be monitored on a basis, making sure that, again, it's clean and making sure that our students are following the proper protocols. This is an important part that we have to talk about, which is our social and emotional learning component. And as we all found out through our March through June period when we all went remote, these became, this social emotional learning component became such a strong need. So one of the things that we are looking at doing as we move forward into the school year, we have to be prepared that at a moment's notice, we would go back into action again with the going all virtual. But it is important that routines, clear communication, our focusing on relationships and safety, and the integration of our social, emotional, and mental health challenges be included in with our daily function within the schoolhouse. Our plans need to concentrate for our students on fear, anxiety, bias, and prejudice and stigma, as well as grief and loss. And we have to anticipate the possibility of an increase in HIV behavior just based on what is happening within our fears of what's going on with this disease. We have our INS teams will be there to identify social emotional needs for students as well as our academics. But we also have, we've been using this, we've been partnering with RISE, reaching individuals socially and emotionally program where we also have an additional contracted licensed clinical social workers that will aid us in that process. When we look at our nursing offices, our nursing offices will be prepared with triage areas. And this is in case we have an influx of students that are sharing symptoms or need to be in isolation. I'm not going to go through this entire piece because it is pretty lengthy, but it talks about the PPE available for transmission-based precautions for our nurses as well as the isolation rooms, which would isolate a child which would be six feet apart in case it happened. I want to share with everybody here on the screen. This is a student COVID-19 process map. And that map basically breaks down what happens if. And I've just recently had to update this because the CDC just updated their protocols. But you can take a look at this and this will kind of walk you through what would happen if someone came in contact, if a student had it, if a parent or caregiver had it. It breaks it down. Earlier in this presentation, I talked about close contacts. This is very, this needs to be very clearly understood. And this came from our local health department over in Montclair, that close contact means with, coming in contact with individuals within six feet of a confirmed COVID case and for a prolonged period of at least 10 minutes and having contact with secretions such as cough or saliva. When we talk about household contacts, we're talking about confirmed cases within the household. And when we talk about casual contacts, we're talking to someone in the same indoor environment that has, that may be symptomatic with a confirmed COVID case. Walking past a lab COVID case or just being in the same building does not qualify as being a close contact. So I want to share that. And that's something that may help families and caregivers to understand and start to make some decisions for their children. This section here breaks down what COVID illness is. It also breaks down what our expectation is as of a district with our parents and caregivers. This basically breaks down your daily health screening guidance. I have to share this with everybody. It is really, really important that we partner together as a community during this time. This time will present a tremendous amount of challenges for us, but we need to do our part as parents and caregivers in screening our children daily. That means looking for illnesses, signs of illness such as cough, fever, congestion, nausea, chills, checking the temperature of your child. If they have a temperature of 100.4 or greater, we are asking to not, do not bring your child to school. It is also important that if your child is experiencing these symptoms and you give them a fever reducing medication such as Advil, Children's Tylenol or Motrin, that does not constitute something that would be acceptable about sending your child to school. That is just reducing the fever at that moment in time, but it will continue. So we ask you that every day that you do this before you send your child to school. We will not be conducting COVID-19 tests, although the state of New Jersey and the county will be. And if you click on that area there, that will share with everybody where those tests can be taken. Again, this is about suspected COVID cases and it breaks it down for everybody about what to do during those areas. Confirmed and household members as well as we are going to do, we're going to attempt a contact tracing and we want to be able to provide as solid information as we possibly can. And we will constantly be in contact with our local health as well as our county health departments if we, if there is a case or if there is a symptomatic staff member or child. This is, this is something that I think it's important to put in here. It's about travel restrictions. We may have family members that are traveling interstate. It is important that we, that our families follow the 14 days prior to school starting on September 8th, the travel restrictions and the self-quarantining. We see along the highways that call 511. But the interesting piece with the travel restrictions is we don't, we can't really, we don't, wouldn't really know if people will follow this. But we need people to really, when they're reading this document, to please take those precautions because your actions will impact others. Our extracurricular activities as this moment will pose a major challenge for physical contacts to our students. So as of right now, those extracurricular activities will not be utilized. This does not include necessarily our athletics or our, some of our other activities in other schools. We'll be keeping a close eye on that and we will continually update you on those as we get more information. Field trips will not be permitted at this time. If there was a walking field trip, that would have to be approved and we would have to look at the risk that that poses. This is the part where everybody is very, very interested in. And this is the enrollment options. And so what we are providing our students here in Cedar Grove are two options. The first option is an A and a B week. And this is a return to school with a hybrid version in delivery of instruction. And I want to share this. I was very appreciative of all of the families and caregivers who took the survey. We had around 600-plus families who did this. We had over 130-plus staff members who did this. And their information was vital and priceless. I also want to share that we had a district review committee. And our conversations that we had the other day were extremely vital and some of our changes that we had to place into this. And it is, it is really, it is really essential that we really listen because it makes a difference. And so looking at this with our feedback, our A week and our B week, pre-K through grade 12 students will have the option of attending the physical schoolhouse Monday through Thursday. That will be every day for our A week students, Monday through Thursday. And then the following week would be our B week students. We will be working at 50% capacity in each of our buildings. And the way we will split our A week and our B week students is that week A students will start with the last name, letters, with the last names of A through L. And students with last names starting with the letters M through Z will attend B weeks. The district is attempting to accommodate families and caregivers unnamed weeks with students in both elementary and middle schools as well as the high school. When we look at this, the students that do not attend, for example, A week students who are attending the schoolhouse, if B, that's when B week students will be at home. B week students will be getting live streaming instruction through Google Classroom during that time. Then... And then what will happen is, is that will happen for our high school. Also, when we look at our option two, which is full virtual, these are the, these are the families that are deciding that they do not want to have their children participate in the live schoolhouse instruction. It is important to understand that we are going on a half-day basis for our students. So we are working on a half-day calendar. And I'm going to share this with you as we move down the screen here. What we've done is we've prepared a September through December calendar. We've done this because things may change as we go into the fall. We will update these calendars if we have to continue working under these circumstances. But if we look at week, week eight, or first week rather, on the 8th of September, week A, we will have three days of instruction and Friday will be an all-remote day. And let me walk you through what this will look like. Students will enter the building at their regular start times and they will end at the half-day time. When they do this, they will then leave school and they will be able to proceed home. But that doesn't mean that instruction stops. That means that instruction will continue. After, after our staff has had their lunch, they will then get onto their devices and they will be able to remotely work with students that have been on virtual instruction, that have been on their off-week instruction, as well as our students that have been in the schoolhouse during that instructional period of that week. It's important to share also that on Friday, every single student in Cedar Grove will be on remote instruction. And there will, and one of the things that we will be sharing out in the weeks to come are detailed protocols and guidelines as to what is expected of our students during the time while they are on remote instruction. Again, just as a reminder that Friday, the reason why we have all-remote is because of our deeper cleansing. And if you can notice here, the reason for that is because if, once we clean on Friday, our new crop of students will come in on week B, starting on the 14th. And that is where they will, they will continue their live schoolhouse instruction. As we move down, our in-person instruction with social distancing, students will, students' belongings will be kept apart from others. belongings will be kept apart from others. Lockers will not be available in the middle school. Students will be utilizing their backpacks only. If students are keeping items in the classrooms, they are to be contained in labels. High school students, lockers for high school students will be on a limited basis, and that will be something that will need to be discussed with the high school administration and based on a need only. And the reason for that is, is because of the lessening of the contact for our students. Physical education during this time, physical education will be directed to be six feet apart. There will be lessons designed as to not share items that would cause risks to students, and they will be taught in small groups. Gym lockers will not be available or accessible during this time. Students are to dress for physical education comfortably on the days they participate in, in physical education. We talk about technology. We are looking to offer our students Chromebooks. Right now, we have ordered multiple more Chromebooks for our students. We now, right now are at the mercy of our distributors, so we are getting information from our distributors that they feel that that should be, they will be able to provide that for us based on every other district in our area and across the country looking to buy these items. So I will give you updates about that as well. Again, this breaks down, I won't go, I won't go through all of this for you, but you can read this. It basically talks about when you get your Chromebook and what is expected of you. Meals and lunch, we will not be providing lunch for your students. But all students' grades, actually, it will be grades, I will change that, that right there is a typo, grades five through 12 will have the ability to utilize our grab and go lunch boxes at the end of the day. This is not mandatory. This is something that you can participate in if you'd like. The food selections will be limited based on, it will be no, less contact. But we're looking at this as an option for our half-day program to provide students an option of going home and having a meal prepared for them. We do, we do heavily suggest, and we really want to promote that everybody, everybody does fill out their free and reduced meal applications, and those will be available online as well as paper applications will be available at schools. Transportation, we will continue our transportation, the protocols that we talked about before, it may look familiar to you with the, with the wearing of a mask and social distancing. We talk about what happens when a student enters the bus and staying six feet apart on the bus. Don't forget, the ridership will be reduced to half during this time. No food or drinks will be allowed on that bus during that time, as well as expect buses to be running late the first few days just based on the new procedures. Car riders, we anticipate the increase of parents dropping off their students. So we need to, schools may have to assign staggered drop-off times, but we'll get more clearer ideas of that as we start to move into the beginning of the school year. Our EDLTP, this is our emergency distance learning transition plan, we have to be aware at a moment's notice that we may have to go completely virtual again. With that, we will, we will communicate to everyone our district action plan. We will also, we will have a heavy communication for our, our district as well as individual school distance, distance learnings transition plans. That will all be executed by staff, students, and families. We have to work in this together. If, if a parent or caregiver wants to provide their student with, or their child with full-time instructional, virtual instruction, they have unconditional eligibility for full-time remote learning. We need to understand that whatever we provide for our students, it will be pursuant to our local statutes, but district attendance policies and any other districts' policies of delivery of services and expectations and, and students participating in remote programs, that will apply. So let's walk, I'm going to walk everybody through what do you do if you want to send your child fully virtual? Well, if you notice, at the bottom over here, you'll see something highlighted in blue. It's called the Cedar Grove School District Virtual Learning Request. If you click on that link, that link will bring you to a form, and that form will walk you through information that is vital for us as a district to start to prepare plans for students who want to go virtual before the first day of school. And we are requesting that you submit that request by August 14th. That gives families a week and a half to start to really digest what we're, what we're presenting tonight and, you know, making that decision as, as best as possible as a family. Please understand, you may make that decision and then you may want to change that, but that will be something that you will have to share with us. If you want to go full virtual after the first day of school, it is important that you make all requests, those requests should be made the Monday prior to the week of expected change in programming. So if you decide to do that, you will also have to fill out the Cedar Grove School District Virtual Learning Request. And any kind of questions or concerns that you may have, we highly encourage you to go to your building principal first, and then if you, if you, if there needs to be further discussion, you will contact our district office. Procedures for transition from full-time instruction to in-person, we're, we're asking families to follow our health and safety guidelines, and this is basically very familiar to you because we just walked, we just walked you through what COVID illness is and suspected COVID is, and it breaks it all the way down for you. We've also included a, a section here about frequently asked questions. And these are just some, some questions that will, in our plan, that will kind of help work you through what happens if, if, about contact tracing and what, what about buses and can schools force faculty and staff to get COVID tested? So it walks you through this. But the one thing I want to share with everybody at the bottom here is, you know, we, we talk about our students with, with students with disabilities. It is important that everybody understand that we will follow the code and the state statutes with providing our students with services. If there is a need, excuse me, for an alteration of an IEP, we will, we will be in contact with you based on the services that we will, we need to provide and are mandated to provide for your child. There's another section, one of our last sections, which, which is parent resources. And this is a really great section because it breaks down for families just questions and how to talk to your children. You know, one of the things we have to really think about is when we, when we send our children back to school, is that we as adults have been struggling with what, what this means to us and how this has affected us personally within our families and within our community. And we not only as us, we as adults are feeling this, but our children are feeling it as well. And a lot of times, we as adults may project those feelings onto our children, or they may be projecting it towards, onto their friends. And so we need to have a good sense of how do we talk to our, our children about that. And in this section, you will find multiple resources and tips and strategies on how to talk to your children, how to be mindful of your speech. And routine is essential. Now, this is the one thing I do want to talk about, and when we talk about the rationale and the reasons why we decided to go this route, is because it is essential that our, that our students and your children have a clear routine, especially for our primary age students and, and also our, our, our secondary students, our, our, our high school students. Routine is essential, something that is sustainable, structure. These are things that we were yearning for during the May through June months, and this was what was, was shared with us during the surveys that were shared with us. It was the idea of structure, making sure that we're safe, making sure that we are, we're healthy. And it's also the delivery of instruction, because I want to share this with everybody. And, and research shows that a, a year loss of instruction is a year, is a lifetime loss of, of education for a student. And too often, we see that happening, and now this is something where it is forced upon us. So our goals were to move together and try to provide as much face time as possible with our students, with as much continuity to allow the staff to provide them with instruction and to provide them with the continuity of delivery of, of that instruction. And it was, I was very appreciative of a lot of the feedback that the Cedar Grove Education Association shared with us about how they, how they can and will do that for our students and your children. So when we break this down, the last piece I want to share with everybody, which is probably one of the most important pieces for us, is that you'll notice it says for questions and comments, comments, please email. That address that you see right there, cgopening@cgschools.org, that will be a direct line for any kind of comments, questions that you may have about going back to school and based off of this plan. Our intention is that we will be providing you, our families and caregivers, with an live and ongoing updated FAQs for families to take a look at based on, on questions. Now, we will do the best we can with answering as many questions as we can through those emails, but you may find a lot of your questions will be answered during the FAQ. And we will continue that as we, as we approach the beginning date of schools and as we enter past that date. So please take advantage of that and, and please don't be afraid to utilize that. So I appreciate everybody's attention tonight, and this will be available after this presentation. And I encourage you as a family, as a community, to take the time and really look through this and make a really conscious decision that will make, that will serve your child the best and what's best for your family.
Thank you. I know that was very long and it was a lot of detail, and I'm glad somebody other than me got to speak for that long of a period of time, that's what I'm going to say. So all of this will be on our website. We're going to be posting that this evening, right? So everybody will have access to this. I see that there's a lot of questions coming, coming in the chat box. The way we're going to work this is I want to get through with the rest of the items on the agenda, then I'm going to open up the meeting for public comment. And at that point, well, everybody can take a turn. I'm not going to answer questions through the chat box. You're going to have to state your first and last name and your address, and then you can state your question or your comment that way. And so I just ask everybody to be respectful and, and everybody will get a turn. So just bear with us while we get through the rest of the regular agenda, and then we'll get to the part where I know people want to ask questions. So moving on, from the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under Business, can I have a motion for B1?
Go move.
Second. B1 is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove Public Schools Return to School Plan for the 2021 school year. Any discussion?
No.
I think we discussed it enough. All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Die.
Yes. Under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S4?
So moved. Second.
S1 is a motion to approve Robin Calley and Katie Hanlon to continue to get paid for Phase 2, which is July 27th to August 6th, and Phase 3, which is August 10th to August 28th, summer recess pre-screening at the rate listed, not to exceed the rate listed every two weeks. S2 is a motion to retroactively accept the resignation of Jeffrey Mungia, paraprofessional at MMS. S3 is a motion to accept the resignation of Adam Weinstein, MMS Social Studies teacher. And S4 is a motion to accept the resignation of Patricia Caruso, North End second grade teacher. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Die.
Yes. Now, Mr. DeVita, under Policies, S5, we don't have to review anything because we already did, but S6 is what, oh no, S5 is what we do have to review.
Yes.
Okay. So S5 is a motion to approve a first reading of the following new policy, which Mr. DeVita is going to walk us through right now.
Yes, Policy 1648, this is the Restart and Recovery Plan. It is a new policy. It's from the New Jersey Department of Education. They published the Roadback Restart and Recovery Plan for Education, which is a guidance document for reopening schools in September of 2020 during the COVID-19 pandemic. And school districts are required to develop a, a plan of their own that is consistent with the, the New Jersey Department of Ed guidance. And the policy identifies those areas where the school district must develop protocols that best fit the district's local needs. In addition, the policy indicates the following areas that they are required to take specific action: transportation, screening, PPE, and response to students and staff presenting symptoms, contact tracing, facilities cleaning practices, academic, social, and behavioral supports, scheduling of students, and staffing. And this policy, policy shall only be effective through the current COVID-19 pandemic and will take precedence over any existing district policy or regulation on the same or similar subject unless determined otherwise by the superintendent. And this is a mandated policy.
Thank you. So any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Die.
Yes. Can I have a motion for S6?
So moved.
Second.
S6 is a motion to approve the second reading of the following policy updates slash revisions that we went over at our last meeting. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Die.
Yes. All right. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. And I believe you have the ability to unmute yourself. I don't necessarily want to unmute everyone because it's a little loud. Okay, Maria R., you have a question if you want to state your, your name and address?
Yes, hi. This is Rodriguez from the Cedar Grove High School. I just want to know, good evening, everybody. I'm so sorry. I'm not used to this. I want to know if this document is going to be available to us to read because it went a little bit too fast for some of the details.
Yes, the document will be available tonight after our, our meeting, and it will be available for you to go through each of the sections. So exactly what you saw on the screen will be exactly what you will be able to read tonight.
Okay. Is this going to be shared through Google?
It will be shared on the website.
Okay.
So the webs, the website has, if you look at the top page of the website, there is a banner, and in fact, I could try to, let me, let me do this right here. I'm going to try to show everybody where this would be. I'm sorry. Give me one moment. Well, as this is trying, as I'm trying to do this, it's at the very top, the very top, hold on, I think I see it right here. There we go. So see the top over here is the Cedar Grove School District reopening and COVID-19 information. If you click on that, click on that section.
Okay.
Yeah, it will, it'll walk you through there. It's taking a little bit of time, but it'll, it'll walk you through there.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bonnie Fiala, go ahead.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I just have a question for.
You just have to state your group's last name and your address first.
Okay, Bonnie Fiala, 16 Pine Drive.
Perfect. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So essentially, there's going to be one teacher responsible for three different groups. You have Group A, Group B, and all virtual. Is that correct?
So the teacher would be responsible for their regular class load, so that could range from a minimal amount of students to say perhaps 20 students. The teacher would not be necessarily, the teacher would not necessarily be teaching the physical students in front of them all at the same time, but they, the teacher will be teaching the students in a combination of in-person and virtually.
Right. So you have the group that's in-person, the Group B that's not in-person, and then the group that's all virtual.
That's correct.
And so, I mean, one, that just seems quite impossible and, and a lot to put on one teacher. So my next question is, is there talk of having a teacher be responsible for the virtual, all virtual students?
Not at the present time. There isn't, there isn't any talk of that. Right now, our plan is to have our staff members, you know, utilize the platforms that we have, and as we move forward, we will consistently evaluate.
Okay. And as far as the pre-K, what is that going to look like?
So the pre-K is, so this is, this is, this is where we look at pre-K and kindergarten, it will look identical to what a kindergartner would look like. There would be an A, A week of pre-K students and a B week of pre-K students. The only issue is, is that, you know, pre-K and kindergarten have a high level of creative play. And unfortunately, that is impossible to do with. And unfortunately, that is impossible to do with the plans that the, that we currently have or the, or the, or the, or the plans that the state has quite frankly placed on us. So when we talk about our, our younger students, our primary, primary students, you know, half of their day would be academic and half of their day would be creative play. And there'd be collaboration in learning personal skills. And unfortunately, a lot of that is not going to happen based on the fact that students can't go to the kitchen and they can't go to play with the blocks. And they can't go and utilize some of the other manipulatives that they were always used to utilizing based on the fear of transmission of disease. So that pre-K and kindergarten will look quite different this year than it has in the past.
Okay, I mean, just, you know, going along with the social and emotional concerns, that's a big concern as far as sending the younger students to school into a room that's going to look nothing like they remember. That's just concerning, and I know that's the way it is right now, but it is something to think about.
Yeah, you know, I have to share with you, I know, so I just want to share with you something personal. So I have five children and my youngest is, is going into first grade. He was a kindergartner. And, you know, I'm a, I'm a very large advocate for primary education, both socially, emotionally, and academic in the, in the creative component. And I will tell you, that is, that's, that's a huge piece in the development of a child. We look at our major grades such as our kindergarten, our first, third, fifth grade. And as we look at our, our middle school years, the seventh grade and our high school years as our, our junior and freshman years, those are pivotal years in a child's education. Unfortunately, based on the parameters which we have to work within right now, those are, the, the normalcy of what we, what we worked within, they're, they're changing. It's changed. And, you know, we are, we as a staff are going to work within the best that we can within those confines. But I hear you, understand that it, that it will look different. But unfortunately, it has to look different based on the safety and health and wellness of each of our children and our staff.
Okay, I, I don't want to monopolize the time, so I'll, I'll come back on it at the end. But I just have one last question with live streaming. Is that going to be for as young as pre-K?
Yes, it is.
And are the students, okay, I'm sorry.
And that is where the partnership with families really come into play. That is where the screen time may not, it will, it will not look as if we're sitting on the screen all day long. There will be moments in time, but pre-K could look very, very different. And kindergarten can look very, very different. But yes, there will be live instruction, screen time. For example, one of, of a big component to our pre-K and kindergarten classes would be that circle time and that rug time. We won't be having that now. But we can possibly do that virtually. We could possibly do that while we're in the classroom and a little bit, a different way of delivering that, but it won't be the same. So yes, it, it will be a combination of, of live instruction, some independent instruction, and some collaborative instruction with families at home.
Okay, so the camera's just on the teacher. I, I'm just trying to envision it because I have three children at North End and I teach first grade as well. And I just don't see how live streaming is going to work with the younger ones because essentially, the teacher is in the classroom interacting with one group and the students at home are getting it, you know, in a, almost like a lecture format. And for the young ones, you know, I'm more than 20, 30 minutes listening. I, you know, I, I just don't see how that is going to work.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I hear what you're saying because we know the attention span of, of most people for adults doesn't go beyond 20 minutes. But for children, it's even less than that and it can be below 10 minutes. So we need to understand as educators that the structure of our classrooms will look extremely different. And the delivery of our instruction will look very different than it has of September of 2019. So we're going to have to really look at how we deliver that instruction and what is going to best fit our individual students. And that's why the component of face-to-face instruction is so vital because that is going to allow our, our staff and our teachers to truly understand the whole child, the individual child, what their needs are, and how we can communicate with them and their families on a consistent basis, which is what is most, most important for them. So I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Hi, Carolyn Oms, One High Point.
Good evening, Carolyn.
Hey, how are you?
Great. How are you this evening?
I'm okay. I just have a quick question, I guess, about the logistics of not just the sanitation. And I think it's great that you guys are going to be doing the deep cleaning and the sanitizing and everything. But I sort of feel like, you know, as the parent of a kid in middle school, that there's just like two things that I, I feel need to be brought up. One is what kind of mitigation is there going to be in terms of ventilation? Since Governor Murphy has basically halted reopening of indoor activities based on the fact that it seems that that's where cases are spiking is that when, you know, when communities return to doing things indoors, that that's where the risk is. And two, in terms of changing classes, how are we going to keep students from sort of not socially distancing?
That's a, thank you for that question. So the first, first answer to your question with the mitigation of airflow, would that, if you go back to the plan, when you get a chance to read it, it kind of walks you through a little bit about our HVAC systems. And one of the things that we're looking at in our system is, in our systems, and I'm not talking about window units, I'm talking about our overall systems are, are cleansers, air cleansers that will purify the air. That's something that our buildings and grounds supervisors are, have been investigating. So that would be in various areas of the building where our, our air handling units are on our roofs, which go into individual classrooms. And as far as our rooms that have window unit, air conditioning units, if you're using the fresh air component, you are not just recirculating the air in the room. What you're doing is you're bringing air from the outside and, and very similar to how, how your car air conditioner works. So you wouldn't necessarily be having that same concept. If a, if a room doesn't have that, then you would have windows open and the doors would be open. A lot of the times, we look at, you know, our classrooms, doors are closed. Children are contained in it, but now as you move forward, those doors will be closed. And those, the windows will be open. In the, in the univentilators will be, you know, bringing intake of outside air and moving that through the classroom as well. So there's multiple ways of, of manipulating that air so it does not stay stagnant within the classroom. And your, your, your other question was, I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
You bet. It's just basically when, when the children are changing classes, how we're going to make sure that they maintain social distancing? Because we know middle school kids are, you know, they're kids, they're impulsive. They're going to just sort of like maybe rush for the door or, you know, in the hallways. How do we make sure that the kids are maintaining social distancing?
So part of what a protocol in a classroom would be, it would be about how we would exit the classroom. It might be, it has to be very structured as well as our one-way. Perhaps our buildings will be utilizing a one-way hallway service or a staggered classroom release. So there's multiple ways of doing that based on the amount of students that we have in each of our classrooms and how, what are, what are, what our overall load is within the building. And all those, all those particular pieces will help us to gauge and provide as minimal amount of contact as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris Canelo, Cedar Grove Education Association.
Canelo.
Good evening, everybody. I see we got a lot of people on the call. I really appreciate everybody coming out during this vital time and listening to this enormously important information. So while the CJ believes a phased-in approach, beginning with all virtual instruction is the safest, safest option. We want to take the time to commend the administration for listening to our concerns and drafting a plan that addresses many of them. We look forward to working as a team to provide the best education possible for our students. We will continue to navigate this difficult task of reopening schools under a global pandemic with the best interest and safety of the students and staff and the community in mind. With that said, we hope that the administration will also start making plans for all 100% virtual model. Because everybody I'm talking to seems to think that with the rates of infection going up, that, that, you know, we may, even if we go in for a short period of time, we may, you know, end up coming out if we get a couple of infections, if the rates in the communities go up. So, you know, and, and I just want to make it clear that the teachers, the teachers that I represent, the staff that I represent, the ESPs, the PARs, the custodians, we all want to be in our buildings. We don't get into education so we could stare at a screen for four or five hours a day. You know, this is my 21st year, my 20th in Cedar Grove, and I love my students. I love being in the classroom with them. I love being able to travel the world with them, to be able to see them on the stage, to be able to see them out in the sports. This is not where we want to be. But, you know, I do have concerns. I, I think anybody that follows me on social media and sees a newspaper article that, that have been featured in understands the position. But with that said, I look forward to working with this administration to continue to refine this plan, to do everything we can to make sure that everybody, the students, the staff, their families, and the community is safe. I'd like to thank the members of the committee that served the review committee, all of them. There were five of my members on there. There were parents on there. There were administrators on there. And we engaged in two and a half hours of some very heartfelt conversation. And out of that came this plan. You know, obviously, there were, there was some compromise. Not everybody got what they wanted. And, and I don't think everybody in the community is going to get what they want. I don't think, you know, some people are going to say this is too much time. Some people are going to say this is too little time. But I think we all have to understand that in a, in a time like this, and none of us have ever lived in a time like this, that, that we really need to work together. And, and that's enormously important. And that, you know, this is not about politics. This is about our education of our children, the safety of those kids and their families, the safety of, of my members, of all the people that are in that building. So I just want to emphasize that, you know, Mr. Grasso, welcome. You know, baptism by fire, I guess, you know, first day, and we, we had a great meeting. So thank you, everybody. And I really appreciate so many of you being on this call tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Canelo, I want to thank you. I want to thank you. I look forward to our partnership. And I, and I appreciated the, the feedback and the togetherness that we had when we were working together on the District Review Committee. I also want to share with everybody that I am in agreeance with Mr. Canelo where we talk about our Emergency Distance Learning Transition Plan. And everybody will be getting more information in the coming weeks about that because as I shared in our plan, we have to be prepared on a moment's notice. And that is part of our district action plan and our district communication. So thank you very much, and I do look forward to our partnership in the future.
Hi, good evening. This is Dawn Dora, 56 Union Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. I actually have a couple of questions, so I'm just going to kind of put them out there and hopefully you can address them all. My first, well, first of all, as a education administrator in a neighboring district, I appreciate all the time and effort that everybody has put into developing this plan. I know we have spent endless hours developing ours, so I do appreciate that and thank you all for that. With that being said, can you please address how, you indicated that the students in the middle school and the high school will, will be traveling from class to class? What is being done to sanitize the classrooms once one group of students leaves and then another group, I'm assuming, is going to be entering into that building, into that classroom? So what's the plan for that? My other question is, how are you going to address students that are unable to wear masks because of medical issues, social, emotional issues, anxiety, any other type of conditions or circumstances that does not allow for those masks to be on? And then my last question is if you could please talk about what the schedule, give us a, a better idea of what a daily schedule will look like as far as like start and end times? How much of that instruction is going to be live when they're on the virtual part? And where, how will specials be included into the day? Maybe you can just kind of give us a mock schedule. I think that would probably be very helpful for many of the parents.
Okay, thank you very much. First of all, let me, let me share with you about the sanitation of the classroom. So we are currently right now, and we were just having that conversation today with our buildings and grounds. There is several options that we're looking at, and that's something that we will be sharing out with our community. As I said, this document will be evolving and it is very fluid. So we will continue to update that. But we are, we are looking into how, what is reasonable and what is health and safe for our students as they enter each of those classrooms. And we have, I mean, one of the thing, nice things that we do have here is we have a partnership with our surrounding districts. So we have been just sharing ideas back and forth with what would work best in each of our districts. So I do encourage you, as you, as you have shared, if you have some ideas about that or anything else within this plan, to take advantage of that, of the email. And I would definitely will look at that. But as far as the sanitation, there are several options that we're looking at. And some, all of those options, I can't necessarily share with you distinctly what they would be based on the fact that we want to look at just based on our, our clean procedures and with our custodial staff as well as our buildings and ground staff. When you talk about your ma, the masks, masks are mandatory. If a child does not want to wear a mask, we will work with that child and their family about reasons why they can't wear the masks. But it is mandated by the state of New Jersey as well as the CDC that any person that enters a building wears a mask. So if the child is unable to wear a mask, we will look to working with the family as to how we can work together getting that child to wear a mask. If they can't, and if there, if there's a medical condition or a particular other need, we will deal with that on a case-by-case basis. And with, as far as a schedule, our schedules will, will be, you know, the schedule at an elementary school compared to a middle and a high school will all look very different. Obviously, we look at our Core Four, which is our science, our Science, Social Studies, ELA, and Math. Those are our major, our components down at the elementary levels. But our, our specials are extremely important as well. That brings the artistic abilities and, as, through music and art. So our, each of our individual schools are creating those schedules right now. Some of them may look a little bit different than what they look like in the past. I know, I know that our high school works on a rotating, double rotating drop schedule. So that would continue as we move forward on a half-day process as well as the middle school. So our intention is, is that the classes that each of our students would participate in, they will get that during the four-day period, as well as physical education included in that. But we have to be very aware that when we were crafting this, and the reason why we did that cluster of four days is because continuity is key. And we may see a lot of other models that may have two days on, a break, and two days on for another grouping. As an educator, and although I'm a superintendent, I'm a teacher, right? So when I look at delivering instruction to my children, those four days are important, especially if I'm working on a, a, a hands-on project or project-based learning, whatever it may be. So the schedules are going to look quite different, but they will include your Core Four at your elementary levels, including the specials. And at the middle and high school, you will have your, your, your rotations that they will continue working on. But they will be at a condensed time limit based on the half-day level.
So the half-day schedule, will that follow our traditional as far as times, start and end times?
Yes, so it will, it will follow the traditional schedule. And we have to be mindful that our staff, they need to have lunch. So they will have their lunch. And then the, the final two to an hour and a half left in the school day will be working, our staff will be working with our, all of our students remotely. And that will, there will be guidelines to that as well and expectations for students logging in. There, there can be small group instruction during that time remotely. Perhaps there might be some independent work that teachers will, will be collaborating with their students on through Google Classroom. But we also talked about a, a succinct platform that we will all be using because I know for myself, there was, there was a lot of different platforms that were moving around during our March through June, and Google Classroom is something that the district is working on, working with and has been working with, and that was what we will continue to work with. So there's consistency and continuity to that as well.
So just for, I'm sorry, this last question, but just for clarification. So when the Cohort A is in-house, brick and mortar, and Cohort B is home, are the students, I'm sorry, kids are coming up.
That's okay. I got a whole bunch of stuff.
Are the students that are home going to be livestreamed into what's going on in the classroom at the same time? Or is it, will it be two separate? at the same time, or is it, will it be two separate instructions?
No, it will be synchronous. So as the students sitting at home and the students in the brick and mortar schoolhouse, they will be getting that same live instruction. Now, as a previous member just shared earlier about our pre-K or kindergarten, that will look a lot different than our ninth and our 11th graders. But they will get that synchronous instruction. And the reason why we look at that is for continuity. We have to understand that, and I've shared this, that COVID will come to an end. And what will happen after that, we will have to deal with. And so it is essential that we, we still have to follow our curriculum mapping, and we still have to follow our structures. And so we want to provide our students with the best quality education that we possibly can, and that we look to do that through the synchronous livestreaming. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, Mrs. Di, it's Jody Lajoie from 35 Cedar Grove Parkway. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
How are you doing? I just have two questions going back to the safety measurement. So the first is the screening that's going to take place. Can you just, can someone confirm what happens if a child were to develop those symptoms over the course of the day? Will they be sent home?
So thank you for that question. And I want to also share too that our plan is currently posted on our website. So if you do click onto the top banner of our website, and you see the click here for page, you will be able to click on that, on that plan. But when we look at a student who may develop possible symptoms, that student, obviously, our procedures will be a lot different than in the past. In the past, we may have a student, you know, wait it out, see how they feel. Anytime that a student, you know, comes to the nurse's office or shares with their teacher that they may be experiencing those symptoms, our nursing staff will be in collaboration with us at the district office as well as the principal, and as well as our local and county health departments. And they will be giving us guidance on our next steps. This is not something that we will be doing in isolation. It is important that we do communicate with them because we, because we have to understand we will not be the only schools going through this. We'll be having our surrounding districts going through this as well. So if a student develops an illness while they are in school, obviously, the parent or caregiver will be contacted immediately. And the reality of it is, is that child will be asked to leave school in the most cautious way possible without contact with other students. And then we will start the process of working with our local health department.
Thank you. And then my second question, can you speak again to the plexiglass? I didn't, except we're, I don't know if it's glass or plastic, but I didn't catch what you said about how that was, are we going to have it at every desk, or what does that look like again?
The plexiglass will be placed in our main offices depending upon our nurse's office and configurations and our high-contact area. They will, and I know in our elementary schools, we are planning on placing plexiglass in the circulation desk in our media centers. So there'll be areas where there would be a decent amount of traffic and where there would be contact between a staff member and a student or or visitor if there needed to be. So yes, we also are looking at those plexiglass dividers. There's a possibility of that in our kindergarten areas and our preschool areas based on the seating, but that is something that we are currently under advisement with.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, this is Yvonne Maficucci from 22 Clara Place.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Okay, so first of all, welcome to our new superintendent. Thank you all. I just want to say that I know how much work, how much time, and what a commitment it is to come up with a plan like you guys have come up with. I know firsthand what it's like to kind of, you know, watch somebody go through this and see, you know, the blood, sweat, and tears that are going into all of this. So I just wanted to thank you all. You know, everybody from teachers, custodians, you know, maintenance workers, everybody up to administrators and board members. So thank you, everybody. I did have one question, and you might have addressed this, but I did have to step away from the computer, and I will go back to read the plan. But just off the top of my head, so when the students are on their off week and they're doing their virtual learning, will they be responsible, like I know in the spring, when they, you know, had to log into their first-period class for attendance, will there be a period-by-period attendance for each class to kind of hold them accountable?
Yes. So when we look at the state of New Jersey, and when we look at our Department of Education, they require attendance to be taken for all classes. So that is essential that that process is taken. So for our students at home on the synchronous learning or on our remote days on Fridays, that will look a little bit different. There will be guidelines that will be sent out and protocols for our of them signing in. It will not be, I know, I know when we, a lot of districts, when we went into remote learning back in March, that was an emergent issue. That was a time where, and I have to tell you, everybody, despite feelings and frustration, and I, believe me, in my house, there was a lot of frustration with that as well. It was emergent, and I will have to, I commend staff and I commend administration for putting together something within a moment's notice, and something that would, that would normally take a year to years to develop appropriately. But yes, attendance needs to be taken, participation needs to be had. And so on the days that there is synchronous learning, Monday through Thursday, students will be required to log in during their time as if they were attending that class.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Janine Patel, 87 Stevens Avenue.
Good evening.
Hi, I have a question about the busing. Mr. Grasso said that it would be cut down to 50%. So normally, my children go on the bus, and I was wondering, when will we be notified if we're still on the bus? Because if there's no way to get our children home, then we're going to have to do virtual, correct?
I'm sorry, so if you are, if you're notified if your children are not able to come home?
Well, if they're getting out at 12:20, and I work in another school in a neighboring district, and be getting out in enough time to come and get the children. So I need to know if they're going to be on the bus. They've been on the bus for the last three years in the middle school. So when will we be notified if the children will be on the bus?
Well, if you qualify for transportation, your child and children will be able to take transportation to school and will be able to take it home, as if they, as if they normally would.
Right, but you said it would be cut down 50%.
No, what I mean by that is ridership on the week would be cut down by 50% because all of our buildings are working at 50% capacity. So you are, your children are still eligible for participation in transportation. What I meant by that was, and I apologize for not being clear with that, is that ridership for Week A will obviously be down a week, will be down by 50% compared to your normal load on a regular school, school day. And bus passes will go out over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I don't want my children, because you said that they would need to get home and log back on for, let's say, last period, just like our district is also doing where I work. They have to, you know, get home, eat lunch, and log back on for last period.
Absolutely, and that's why, and I do want to promote this too, when we talk about our lunch service of grab-and-goes, that's a great opportunity to use our grab-and-go because our children will be able to, your children will be able to eat lunch. By the time they get home, they have a meal prepared, and they get ready to go back on for your remote learning.
Right, exactly. Okay, I just wanted to double-check because when I heard you say 50%, I was like, oh, now it's only half the amount of children, but just wanted to double-check on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Marissa Abaleo, 59 Westland Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I have some concerns as a mom and as an educator, but after hearing this plan, my first thing that I would like to address, which is a major concern for my husband and I, is childcare. My husband and I work, we go to work before the school day, so I was utilizing the before care and after care. We also don't have grandparents or anyone who, at this time, who can stay with our son, so that's going to be a major undertaking. But so taking our son to school, picking him up at 12:30, staying home with him on Fridays, and then having someone with him for the full following week as well. Was anything discussed as far as before or after care, or any options for parents? I'm sure there's many families in the same situation.
I absolutely hear you. In fact, I'm one of those families that are in those situations as well. And that's why it's important for us to really look at this as a family and see what's going to work best for our children. We're not offering the morning or after care just based on the transmission of, trying to keep the transmission of the, of the of the virus down to a minimum. You know, our goal is if students come into the building, they go into the classrooms, and they go home. And that was part of the, you know, one of the rationale that came out of our district advisory committee of looking at those half-days. So currently, right now, we are not offering that based on the ability for higher exposure to that. I would definitely encourage, I know that for my wife and myself, we've looked at our local, our local care centers for some, for some help. So I highly encourage you to do that. The other thing is too, I want to share with you is that, you know, part of the reason why we went with the four days and Friday off is because, you know, some of the feedback that we were able to get from our families was, was that the accessibility of of care for our children was a little bit, was a little bit easier, although nothing's easy right now for consistent on a week basis compared to every other couple of days. So that was one of the things we took into consideration. But I understand where you're coming from, because I'm in that same position myself with my family. And so I know that doesn't necessarily give you a clear answer, but these are some of the things that, you know, my family are doing to help cope with the with the scheduling needs of our family and the scheduling needs of the school.
Okay, thank you. I also have another question regarding the livestreaming, because this was in discussion as well within the school that I work at, and we opted not to go with that because of it was violating student privacy. Is that something that was considered, or is that, you know, when they call out a student's name or if a student is addressed?
Yes, thank you. That's a great question, because that was something that was definitely on our radar. So we definitely, what we did was, part of it was, we collaborated with our legal team on that as well as, and this is, this is available to the public as well, the Department of Education, I'm not talking about the state, but I'm talking about the the nation's Department of Education. They put out a plan about virtual learning, and it's about FERPA rights. And I believe it was March 20th of 2020. And it kind of walked people through what you do with the, you know, the rights and the protocols for livestreaming. And so we will be sharing in collaboration with our association the protocols for livestreaming and what we can and cannot do, and keeping, making sure we keep the privacy of all of our students a priority.
Okay, thank you. And then my last very quick question is regarding when we do figure out who will be staying with my son, the livestreaming times, which are in the afternoon Fridays and then the following week. If there's any issues with technology, as we all know, there are issues getting on to, you know, live Zooms or that sort, whatever platform is being used. If a portion of the day, they happen to be not, you know, not in attendance for some reason, is there anywhere that they can see the assignments that they need to do for that day? Or, you know, if they're with a grandparent who isn't very tech savvy, you know, what is, what are the options as far as that goes? Is there flexibility?
So if there is a hardware or a software issue, that is, if you take a look, once, you know, you have some time to look at the plan, there is some protocols and procedures put into place within the plan with technology. If things happen like that, we will help out the best that we possibly can based on if it's our device and if it's our programming or our software. If there is an issue with a student logging on, we highly recommend you or the caregiver contacting the teacher and letting them know that there is an issue. We will be, we will be flexible with that. What we won't be flexible with are people not going on or students not going on because they didn't want to go on. So that's something that we won't be flexible with, but we will be flexible with the issues with hardware, software, internet capabilities. One of the things when you talk about posting of assignments, one of the pieces of feedback that we got from both staff and from our families was a consistent platform, and that's why we chose Google, our Google Suites, and in Google Suites, each teacher will be able to utilize Google Classroom. And I would, I was, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head about how many staff were using it during our March and our June months. But that will be something that is consistent, and that is, by us using a consistent platform that we participate in and that we purchased, we will be able to better help our staff and our families with navigating through some of those difficulties.
Okay, thank you very much for your time and your answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Trish Wilson, 59 Cedar Grove Parkway. I had a question. I have, I'd like a little more clarification on the hallways. I know you talked about directional hallways and possibly staggered exiting times, and just wondering, you know, about social distancing in the hallways. And also, I wanted to know how the mask mandate would be enforced in the classroom with the students.
So that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I, that's it. That was it.
So like I mentioned before, when we look at our hallway traffic, when we look at our classroom dismissal procedures, some of those are going to have to change just based on, I mean, we know from when we were in school, the bell would ring, everyone would get up and go. That might be a little bit different. It might look a little bit different in each of our buildings. They may, they may have to be staggered based on the amount of children and again, it will be the utilization of up and down stairwells possibly, or the, or the direction of, of the hallways. I know that there are a lot of students that are anxious about this, and it is, it is, it is, as we get closer to our opening day, we will definitely be sending out more updated information about what to expect and what that may look like, and what signs will look like, and how to navigate through that. Masking, one of the things about masks is that I know that masks are uncomfortable, and I know that even for our younger students, it's going to be very difficult for them to keep them on during the day. One of the things that we are going to encourage our staff to do and take advantage of is that when they can, they will certainly have the flexibility of going outside. And I will share this, and I share this with my, on the meeting the other day with our district review committee. Our schools are in some absolutely gorgeous pieces of property with a tremendous amount of land, and I have to tell you, that is very precious. I encourage, and I know that our admin team encourages our staff to utilize that. If the weather's nice and it's comfortable outside, and we can go outside and we can learn, that's a great opportunity to socially distance and give some breathing time and some leg time to kind of move around. But when we are in that, when you're in that building and we are in close proximity to each other, the mask is mandatory. And before you enter the building, you will be, you will be asked to put that mask on. If you do not want to wear that mask and you are, you share that you will not be participating in that, you will be asked to move to the side, and we will deal with each person on an individual basis.
Okay. All right, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm for the masks. I, I'm a supporter of masks, the mask wearer. I guess I was just wondering, like, in the classroom, and I have older children in the high school, you know, if there are students that, like, take it off or, you know?
Yeah.
They are asked to leave the classroom? Is that?
If a student is defined, we're talking about a high school student, and they're defined within the classroom, and they're not wearing a mask, they will be notated to put the mask back on. They will be given a warning to do so. If they decide not to comply with that mask mandate, they will be asked to leave, and then we will call fam, we will notify families because we can't risk that. We can't, we cannot risk that. And if someone does not want to participate in wearing a mask, there is the other option of going virtually.
Great, okay. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Hey, yeah, this is, you can go ahead. You go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Kathy Palamara, 285 Ridge Road. I have a question about IEP. I have a question about IEPs. I have a child that gets an IEP. Is there, during the summer when he was in E S Y and during the time that he was home in the spring, he was getting services online, you know, through virtual. Now with us going forward in September, is, will he be going to school? Is he still following the A week or the B week? Or are kids that have special needs, are they going to school all the time that they're in, like that schools are open? I don't know if that makes sense or not.
It makes complete sense to me.
Okay, because I'm a self-contained special ed teacher in my district. And our students are coming the full amount of date that the school is allowing, allotting even if they're not in group A or group B or week A or week B. So I'm just curious if he's going to be going both week A or week B or just following the week that according to his last name.
So thank you for that. And your son will be going on the week that he is, so however he falls into the alphabet, he will be going there. One of the nice things about the four-day consistency of the week is that, you know, we've been collaborating with our special services department. And Mr. Kenny has been really, really diligent about organizing our special services for our students. With that four-day, for the four consistently consecutive days, that makes scheduling, these additional supports a lot easier. And it also allows us to be able to provide that in-person support for our students. I know that some of our, your joining districts are doing something very similar to what you share. Our special students are going every day. Based on the availability, ability and functionality of each individual district. So we think on our availability and based on our particular needs and based on our schedule. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Nat Harris at 238 Ridge Road. I think Kathy was talking about IEPs and that was kind of my question also. Just has there been, you know, I'm sure there has, but consideration for, you know, these kids learn differently and have different emotional needs. And so it sounds like you've been talking to Mr. Kenny. And so there is some stuff in place, a plan for that?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Kenny has been extremely instrumental in the development of this plan. We have to acknowledge the fact that we have multiple learners that learn in multiple, multiple different ways. And so that's why, you know, when we, one of the things, when you do get an opportunity to really go through that plan, you know, one of the caveats that we have in there is that based on the conditions that we have to currently work through, there may need to be some adjustments in a child's IEP. But we are mandated to provide services for our students. And in our special education code clearly defines that. And that's what we are, that's what we will be upholding. So yes, a lot of preparation has gone into how we can provide those services to our students and what will work best for them. And we know that remote learning did not work well for some of our students with special needs. And that's why the availability of doing that face-to-face is another option that really would help support some of our students' special needs.
Okay, awesome. And another quick question. I know last year, you know, everybody got thrown into this at the same time, you know, it's parents, kids and teachers and everybody. And I know a lot of parents are having a difficult time trying to figure out how to navigate and how to figure things out. So is there any like time or, I know there'll be an FAQ, but set aside for parents to, you know, meet with teachers or somebody because we get overwhelmed and we get confused. And sometimes, you know, we get a slew of assignments and the kids are like, I don't know what to do. And parents are like, yeah, I don't know what to do either. And I would rather avoid that this year if we could.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I have to tell you, I shared with you, I have a, I have a lot of children in my house and it was definitely frustrating for my wife and myself to navigate through that. And, you know, I really encourage you to take a look at some of those parent resources that we place in the back of this, of this plan. It kind of, there's quite a few sections that will help guide you through that. One of our key components is communication. And what you will be seeing in the next week or week and a half is our website that will detail out some of those resources and things that you can talk about. And we definitely encourage our families to have that constant communication with our teaching staff. You're right, when we went into this in March and we went into this through June, I had to share with you, we were all kind of working our way through this. This was uncharted territory for all of us. But I do commend the staff for what they have done because it's, this was tough. When you think about it, this is really tough. We didn't learn this way and our staff wasn't taught to teach this way. So with some of these months behind us and under our belt, we look to provide a more concrete way of moving forward and that open line of communication.
Awesome, I appreciate all the work you guys have put in, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I have a question. This is Nicole Axentu at One Ledgewood Court.
Good evening.
Hi, yes, thank you so much. I had a question pertaining to the distance learning, opting in and opting out. I only got to briefly look at it while it was being discussed. So I'm sure maybe there's more information on the actual document. But I wanted to know what the flexibility actually would look like. So say if a student didn't begin the school year in and they wanted to plus in at a certain time, is it truly a week's notice you need to give? Or is there more time that you would need to give? And the other question is how often can you go in and out? Say, you know, at some point you decide you're no longer comfortable and you want to leave and then you feel you are ready to enter again. What, is there restrictions on how much you can enter and exit at a certain time?
So that's a really great question because I know that's on a lot of people's minds is that one of the things that the, our Department of Education put out to.
Can I sell the other one for you? Because I will.
Just hold on one moment. There we go. That we put out to our, our local school districts was that each school district has to offer a virtual component and each school district needs to provide the option of moving in and out of that. The Monday prior was something that we as Cedar Grove prepared our families with. And the reason for that is, is that if you started, if you started a school year, let's say you didn't start the school year off going face-to-face, but you started virtually and then you started to see how things were moving along and you felt more comfortable and you wanted to do that, well, we needed to give our staff a week's notice to prepare for your child in the classroom. And we also need to prepare you for your transition back into the classroom. Now let's say you started face-to-face and you wanted to transition out. Same concept, same rationale behind that. When you ask the question of how often can you go in and out of that, I'm going to share with you something which is, I think we need to really think about and try to rationalize when we look at the benefits of being face-to-face or being virtual all the time. Consistency is key. If we continue to move, if there's a decision made to move the child in and out of face-to-face and virtual, that becomes very, very difficult for the child. Because what's happening for the children that are going face-to-face is that they are developing relationships, they are developing that face-to-face contact, and they're developing the relationship that they are having with the teacher face-to-face. The children that are going all virtual, they are developing that relationship in a very different way. If we continue to move in and out of those areas, it can be very, very taxing on that child. And I'm not just talking about it academically, I'm talking about it socially and emotionally. And that could cause a larger issue down the road. So is there anything saying that you can't do that? No, there isn't anything saying that you can't do it. But philosophically, and if we look at child behaviors, that, I'm just talking to you from, as a dad, and I'm talking to you from an education perspective. Consistency is key and I would look to weigh those out and try to reduce the amount of times a child would move in and out of that remote, to face-to-face learning.
Thank you so much, I completely agree. And I really appreciate your elaborating on that topic. But I think it is a really great option. And I'm very happy to have been able to be part of this and listen on and it was very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Tom Dorr from 56 Union Street again. I just have one more quick question pertaining to the, if you were, if we were to choose the virtual instruction, full virtual instruction, is that, are you going to have separate teachers doing those instructions for those students that are 100% virtual? And if so, are we, are the teachers that are going to be providing that full virtual instruction, are they teachers that have, I'm going to say experience, but working in those grade levels? So for example, if I have a fifth grader that I choose to be 100% virtual, is it the fifth grade team going to be providing the virtual instruction? Or is it going to be staff members from other grade levels that maybe don't have as much experience in that grade level? That's my first question about that. And then pertaining to the question I asked earlier about providing like a mock schedule to give the parents an idea of what a day would look like in the various schools, will that be available to us prior to that August 14th deadline? I believe it was the 14th where we have to make our decision on whether or not we're sending our child or going virtual. And I promise that's my last question.
That's okay, that's okay. You're asking really good questions. So to answer your first question, our plan is for synchronous learning. And so whoever your child receives as their teacher, they will be receiving that instruction from that teacher. And all of our teachers are highly qualified and excellent educators. So they will be all providing that synchronous instruction, whether you are virtual, full-time virtual, or you are participating in a hybrid version of that. And it is, it is important, especially as you get up to our upper grade levels such as like our high school, those are really specific teaching levels and actually content levels that teachers are teaching. So that would be with those teachers. And as far as a mock schedule, I love that, I love that you brought that up. I can definitely provide a mock schedule as we get, as you get closer to the 14th. This way you can kind of have an idea. And again, it's a sample, right? So it will give you that idea, but at least it'd be something that you can kind of start to craft a decision around.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. I think that would be really helpful to a lot of the parents, especially the parents that are not educators and really don't have a clear understanding of what the day's going to look like. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Jennifer Cranty at 10 Yorkshire Drive. I just had, I have two questions. One, well first, let me thank everybody for their time and their, and their work on this project, which I know is a huge undertaking. The first question I have is, students on remote instruction entirely, are they going to get feedback in a timely fashion? Like are they going to be receiving, if there's a quiz or a test or a writing assignment, are they going to be separated from their group? Or are they going to be getting the information that the group is getting at the same time? I know that's a problem in the past is that Genesis doesn't get updated. And when you're trying to, you know, monitor your children's progress and Genesis isn't updated in a timely fashion, you know, following that can be challenging when you're trying to help students along in this educational world we're living in right now. So how will that go for the remote instruction students?
So all students who are, whether they are fully virtual or they're participating in the hybrid version, the goal is that if you're in a classroom, you are part of that classroom regardless of it being remote or regardless of being face-to-face. So all of the opportunities and options that are afforded to you in that class will be equitable for the remote and for the face-to-face. Obviously, if you're face-to-face, you're getting that face-to-face option, which the remote child would not be getting. But as far as delivery of instruction, curriculum, grading and feedback, that's all part of that. And, you know, our goal is to, feedback is key. So our goal is to provide that feedback in a timely manner. So children will be able to learn from that and then move forward and make those corrections if needed. So, you know, that is something that, you know, we as educators do. And I thank you for the feedback. And, you know, that is something that, it is essential to make this work.
Right, so the second part of my question I was going to talk about, social, emotional, on two parts. The first being that we have at the elementary level, only one school counselor servicing two elementary schools in a time where we have students coming back into a system that have been through a trauma. And I think we have parents relying on the school district to help support their students like through this time and thinking that their students are going to get that social and mental health component that they need. And I think that we need to look at the staffing and say, why do we not have a school counselor whose sole job is to advocate for students at each building? Like to belong to that building, to become the fiber of that building. And I also think on another level, I'd like to see that changed. But on another level, I'm wondering if before the students come back in, are the staff being trained on trauma-informed practices? Are the staff being helped in their time of stress coming back into a classroom, leaving their children behind as they go into the classroom to teach my child? Who I need that teacher to come in in a good frame? Because what the teacher displays is how the kids are going to, or the kids are going to receive. And I just think it's very important that we focus on this. And again, I think that there's a staffing issue when it comes to the social, emotional component of this plan in general. That's just my comment on that.
Well, thank you. And I have to share that, you know, the social and emotional wellbeing and mental health of our, of our students and of our staff are key. And as I shared in the very beginning of this presentation, you know, we all are going through the trauma of what COVID-19 is. And it's all affected us in multiple ways. And I also talked about the projection that we as adults have and how we project it onto our own children and in various ways, whether it's good, bad or indifferent. And I agree, that is a priority and that is an ongoing, that is an ongoing concern that we will, we will care for with our staff and our students. And we will look for multiple ways of addressing those issues. One of the things that I was very, very happy to hear was that we do utilize the RISE program, which is our, they're licensed social workers. And they will definitely be able to add to the mental health of our students and help walk them through. But I appreciate that comment and that's always something that we can reflect upon and look at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a comment?
Hi, it's Bonnie Fiala again, 16 Pine Drive.
Hello.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was holding back because I don't want to jump in again if other people have questions. I just first wanted to say that I thank and I completely agree and appreciate the statement from the president of the Cedar Grove Education Association. I couldn't agree more. I do think all of these plans, teachers are really, and staff being asked to almost do the impossible. With that being said, I do appreciate all the time and effort that it took to come up with this plan. I have a question regarding the school day. So it's 8:10 to 12:30?
Yes, so depending upon where your child is, whether it's at elementary, middle or high school, those start and end times will vary by 10 minutes or so. So we will be sending out, as we get closer to the opening, what those times are. But yes, you're looking at the area around 12:30 for the end of the, of the school day.
Okay, so is it, I could be wrong, so I apologize if I am, but four hours is, is what's considered a full day of school, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So before, I don't know if I misunderstood, when the students come home at 12:30, or you know, give or take five or 10 minutes, they're then expected in the afternoon to go back on with their teacher for more live instruction?
Yes. It could be live instruction, or it could be some independent learning, where there will be small group instruction. It doesn't always have to be a full load of students. A lot of the times it will, but there will also be small group instructions, but the students are required to log on after that, yes.
Okay. And during those hours, for the two groups, the group, say Group B, that's home, and the virtual group, I'm talking more specifically for the younger grades, how many hours is that synchronous instruction going to be? Is it, I just think it would be unrealistic to be live streaming from 8:10 to 12:30. So is it an hour here, an hour there? How's that going to work?
I hear, I hear where you're coming from. We have to look, especially when I shared before with our pre-K and our kindergarten students, even up to our first grade students, we talk about screen time in general. And so that synchronous learning, I'll give you an example. When we look at, you know, the delivery of instruction for a primary grade level, a lot of the times, you will have within the first 10 minutes, your anticipatory set, or, or your introduction of the concept, and you will have examples and modeling that will go on during that time. And then very often, you will have some independent time where the students will be working either collaboratively, or they will work independently, and the collaborative will look so much different now that we're spaced six feet apart. But those times can vary, and it can differ compared to a high school student who can deal with a lecture for 40 minutes, or for three minutes.
Well, that's really my concern, for, speaking for the elementary school, because, oh, sorry.
No, no, you go ahead, you go ahead.
I don't think, obviously, it's realistic that a child in the elementary school, you know, maybe the up third, fourth, but definitely not pre-K to two, is going to be able to sit there. So my question would be, is there going to be a more specific plan? Because, you know, I'm a teacher, if we go back, I'm there five days. So, you know, grandma needs to come on with my three kids, and is it going to be at nine to 10? You know, she's on, and then, you know, another time, they're doing independent work? I just want to get a clearer picture of what it's going to look like.
Right. So each of our, each of our individual schools, each of our individual schools, they will address this based on the differentiated grade levels. And like I stated in the very beginning, the core four is essential, but so are those specials. And so is the emotional, social and emotional component of that as well. So as shared with another, you know, another person who shared about a mock schedule, we will share what that will look like, and we will share what to expect when you go online, and what that will look like. And it will not always be the same length of time every single day, but you are, it is expected that when you log into a class, you're logging into that class full-time. Now, depending upon what's going on in that class, that doesn't mean you're getting that, that, that instruction all the time, like as if it's a lecture, that, especially for our pre-K and our kindergarten, first to second grade students. But there are times, like I just shared with that example, those are those important pieces. So with every type of lesson, there are your, there is your anticipatory set, and then there is your independent learning, and then there's your closure to a lesson. And that's, that is our, that is how we will move forward with our instruction for each of our levels.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, I could see live streaming the direct, the actual mini lesson that's being taught, but when it comes to independent practice and whatnot, if the teacher's helping the group that's in the classroom, you know, do they still need to be live streaming with the group that's home? There's just so many.
Yeah.
I just don't see how that's going to work. And I know, obviously, I feel like a lot of us don't know how it's going to work, and that's really my concern.
It's the unknown, right? You know, I have to share this with you, and I think you bring up a really good point, because you're an educator yourself. You know, the reality of it is, is it's the unknown, and we, it is important for us to know what the end outcome is. And, and we don't know what the end outcome is at this time. We didn't know that we would possibly be sitting in the same position right now and looking to do this, you know, back when we were in April or May. You know, we had, we had some intentions of going in a little bit of a different direction. So, you know, part of this is, is that, you know, we, we have some very talented teachers, very creative teachers. But one of the things I just want to stress too, is that classroom instruction may not look traditional. And when I say that, when I say it will not look traditional, right? So there is, there's a lot of interesting creativity that can come involved in that. And I will share this, I'm just going to share a little story, that one of, one of my teachers that I was with last year, this teacher was a wonderful teacher, but exploded with creativity during the remote learning session. And I know there's a lot of teachers here that had that same, that same experience. So, you know, there, this is, this is very stress, this is very frustrating. There's also some good pieces of this, and I, I try to focus on that, and I know that it's different, and it's, it might be uncomfortable at times. But we, this is where the collaboration with family and school counts so much.
Okay. And I just had a few, oh, just a few procedural questions that I, I'll just ask, and if you could address any of them. One would be specials, are they going to happen during the day? And if so, is the special area teacher coming into the classroom to avoid students traveling in the hallway? But on the flip side, if that is the case, then the special area teacher now is exposing, is exposed to many students, and then is exposed, is exposing students to all the classes that he or she is in. So I'm not sure if that's going to be virtual or not. My other questions are with the bathroom, is there going to be a monitor there to see how many students are in, who's coming out? Because obviously, in the lower grades, that can't be left up to them. How's entering the school going to work? Will there be snack time for the younger kids? And lastly, with their stuff, if they're sharing a desk with the other group, are they, you know, I feel like, are they taking their stuff back and forth with them, rather than keep it in their desk, where now another group is sitting at that desk, and their stuff's in it?
So you asked some really great questions, because these are a lot of things that we've thought about. And a lot of those answers are in the document that's available right now. But our specialist teachers, we look to reduce as much contact time as possible. So we are currently working with each of our individual schools, especially at the elementary level, with our specials, and how we can reduce that time. Some of that may be going into the classroom, some of it may not be going into the classroom. So we're looking at all of those options in providing the best and safest possible position, as well as bathrooms. And some of our younger, our younger classrooms, there are bathrooms that are in those classrooms. So those are, that's very convenient. But for, for most of our schools, the bathroom is located in various areas of the building. You know, we, this is something that I've been talking with, you know, Mr. Mangili, and I've been talking, you know, with middle school, and, you know, just, just looking, even at the elementary levels, about how, how we can monitor that, and what's, what's the most reasonable, and how we can reduce the frequency of bathrooms, although we know bathrooms are inevitable, we're going to have to use them. And that's where the disinfectant of those bathrooms, and the frequency of those touchpoints will come into play. When we talk about snack time, I mentioned that a little bit in the plan. This is something I'll talk with both of our elementary principals about, that I'm really looking at not participating in snack time, because that would be removing your mask. We're going at a half-day schedule, so it wouldn't be such, such as a long day, as if you were in full day. That was one of the pieces that came up during our district committee, about the removal of masks, and the, having to eat within the cafeterias, or the, or the gyms that form its cafeterias. So snacks at this point are not some, is not something that is really in the, in the future, just based on the fact. Now, if there is a medical need, or a medical condition, we'll work with that on a need-to-need basis. But transitions from, from room to room, again, that is something that, you know, I've been talking about tonight, it's in the plan, and we're looking at the, the best way to reduce the amount of traffic in and out of a room, and in and out of a hallway, as well as a stairwell. So, and that all will depend upon our, you know, our, each, each of our student load within each classroom, depending upon the A and the B week. So we're all looking at that, and we're working on that as we move forward.
Okay. Thank you for answering all my questions. I just wanted to know if it was possible, once we have a chance to go through the plan, is there anything that would happen as far as the building principal possibly doing a Zoom, where parents can ask more specific questions to their school, and maybe have a clearer picture before making a decision?
You know, I will talk about that with the administration, but I also do encourage you, at the bottom of the plan, there is an email address. That's, that's one of the great questions to add to, to add to the, to our FAQ.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other comments?
Hi, this is, this is Carolyn Oms again, one high point. And just sort of asking a follow-up question about, so after lunch, kids are going to be logging on for the, for the afternoon, and just curious about if that is replacing homework, or if they are going to be expected to do homework beyond that?
So the additional remote learning, which, which comes out to maximum two hours, and sometimes less, that based on the lunch period at each of our schools, our middle, high school, and elementary schools, because they, the lunch periods do vary. The regular school day will end as it normally would while you're on remote instruction. You know what I'll do, as I'm talking to you, when I, when I do put out those mock schedules, I will include all those times in there for, for everybody, so you can actually see that. But imagine as, imagine it as if it was a regular school day. So school end at the regular school time. Homework will be part of, will be part of a student's life, while they are either on a hybrid, or they're in all virtual. So when you go on remote instruction in the afternoon, that does not replace homework, it's just additional instruction that you normally would have gotten inside the schoolhouse, but now you're getting it in your home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make a comment?
Hi, this is Alyssa Savlakis at 82 Winding Way. I have a question regarding masks in the school. Are there regulations for types of masks, filters, that sort of thing? I just actually looked through the entire, entire report that you guys have posted online, and I don't see one thing that says regulations on that.
So we are, there are state standards, there's NJSLA standards that every district must follow. And then we have district-adopted curriculum. So what we, what we have and will continue to follow are those NJSLA standards, as well as the district-adopted and approved curriculum. So that doesn't change from last year to this year. We will still be following all of that.
Okay. And I have two questions regarding infrastructure. One of them would be, you mentioned before that there will be some sort of air filter that will purify the air in the middle school. Will that be in place for the start of school?
You know, I'm going to share, I'm going to share something with you, and I have to apologize to you, because I thought you said math. So you said masks, and I'm sorry. So you must have been wondering, what is this man talking about? I'm sorry. Oh, boy. No, no, everybody's wondering, like, what is this man talking about? NJSLA standards of masks? No.
I was like, is, are the NKSLA, or is it a CDC rule?
You're very polite, because you just said, okay, next. Thank you. So let me share this. In the, in the, in the beginning of the plan, it talks, it talks about the mandated masks for students. It's in the entrance protocols, and it goes on through the instructions. So masks are mandated, because the, we were mandating it as a district anyway, but then the, then the governor, and then the CDC, and our state, our state Department of Education mandated it. So it's, 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 not only is it in our plan, it's a mandate from the state as well. So I'm,
No, no, no.
Oh, my God.
I, I totally understand that the, that the governor says that it's required for indoors. Is there a standard of what type of mask for students or staff that are required?
I am so sorry. Okay. Third time's the charm. So masks, when we look, when you go on to the plan, I believe it's down, down at the very bottom of the parent resources, there is a section, there's a section on masks. When you look at that, it, we're following the CDC's option for masks. So it can be a, a medical mask, it could be a N95 mask, it could be a homemade mask. A mask is important. If we, and if you read the CDC's, the CDC's guide on masks, what they're, what they're basically talking about is they want a face covering. And so that's the most important piece of this. So that is what's recommended.
Okay. So there's no guideline that it has to have a nose bridge, or anything like that? It's just a face covering?
A face covering, right, right. And we talked mostly about masks. So I guess, I'm sorry, I was just looking at something here. I was trying to find on the plan here, the section where it talks about masks at the bottom. We, we're not requiring nose bridges, we're requiring a mask that would cover the face, the nose, and the mouth. And that could be a, it could be a double-layered, or a triple-layered mask, that provides the most protection. But it could also be a mask that is a medical mask. So we, what we've done here is, we've ordered pediatric masks also for our younger students, because they fit very differently. It's about the fit. And that's really what the CDC recommends, is about the fit across the bridge of your nose, under the chin, and across the sides of your faces, where you're not leaving any gaps.
Okay. Okay. And then I have two infrastructure questions. So the first one was, you had mentioned the air purifiers for the middle school. Will they be in place for the start of school?
That is our goal, absolutely. We've been talking with buildings and grounds about this, and we are, we're looking at, you know, some, we're looking at some devices that would go directly into our HVAC system. Those are in our larger air carriers that are on our roof. And then we've also looked at some individual units that could possibly go into our nursing offices. So yes, that is our plan to have it already by the, by the opening of school.
Okay. And my second question is, I was on the last call, where it was reported that all the construction projects were done at the schools, but I have witnessed at North End that all the ramps have recently been, I want to say, removed and re-put in. Is that construction going to be done by the time school starts as well?
Yes, that is our plan.
Okay.
Yes, that is part of our punch list.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate the time that it took to put this plan together. I know that it can't be easy, and I appreciate all the staff willing to take the risk to go in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Anybody else wishing to make a comment?
Hi, my name's Sarah Margiata. I live at 36 Linwood. I just have two quick questions. We, you know, the first one being, I've just been listening to everything that's been said, and I understand we can't have 100% certainty with things, especially when it comes to individual buildings. But people have brought up some really good ideas, and highlighted some things that parents would benefit from knowing, so that they can make the most informed decision. And of course, we want to be respectful of the August 14th time limit, when we choose whether or not we're going to go fully virtual, or if we're going to do the hybrid plan. So what, not, not that I'm going to hold you to a hard and fast timeline, but like, how long do you think or imagine it would take to sort of produce the things like you were discussing with the mock schedule, more clarity on the sanitation procedures, and what you're going to be utilizing, and how, you know, bathrooms are going to work, and things like that? and what you're going to be utilizing and how, you know, bathrooms are going to work and things like that? And my second question is, when you were discussing earlier about teachers having their normal student load and, you know, be that 20, 25 kids and it's broken up between the cohorts and the all virtual. When a child like, or a parent decides that, okay, I'm more comfortable going in the building now, that's obviously going to, that's going to change the amount of people in a room. That's going to shift the, the number. So at what point would there be a cutoff? So, or, or would there be a, or how would that be handled? Like, would there be a time where I would not be able to say, I would like to go in person? Okay, those are my two questions.
Thank you, thank you. So we're going to look to get out to mock schedules as quickly as possible. I love that idea, I think it's really great and I think it'll be very informative to our families. So I will work on that and get that out to our pub, our, our community as quickly as possible. So you can make a decision by the 14th and an educated decision by the 14th. As far as the load in the classroom, the, the reason why we broke A week in, up into A through L and we broke our B, our B week M through Z is because of, is because of the amount of students that we have within each of our buildings that have last names that start with those particular letters. So if a student decided to leave, so let's just say A through L had 11 students in the classroom. If, out of that 11, if two or three of those students decide to go on virtual learning and one of them decides to come back, it wouldn't make a difference based on the, the allowed load. Don't forget, one of the things that we have to be very careful of and pay close attention to is, is that in each of our rooms, it is a square footage based on each individual student and based on each individual desk. So we're, we are taking each desk and we are, are, are separating them both front, back and side to side by six feet. So that reduce, significantly reduces the load that we can carry, we can physically carry in a classroom. So if you had 11 kids and then, then you're down to nine kids because several other, you know, a couple others are on, on home virtual instruction and, and one or two decides to come back, well, you're still going to be able to do the possibility of keeping everybody socially distanced within the classroom.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was wondering. Because I know, especially at South End, we do, or we did, they, they may have moved on already. We just had some larger classes, which definitely had more than, you know, just the, the idea of 20 kids. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if there was going to be a cutoff or just something that would be prohibitive to kind of flowing back and forth between the two options. You know, I just wanted to know if that would be out there. And just a, a last thing I wanted to just dovetail off of, somebody earlier had mentioned the role of the school counselor. And I just want to say, I am a school counselor, I feel like I need to advocate for the position as well. Having, you know, one counselor work between two buildings with, with a possible caseload of upwards of 800 students, we all know it doesn't go with the ASCA guidelines of one for every 250. And I know that we don't live in a perfect world where, you know, we can always stick to these, these guidelines. But, you know, I do think it would be beneficial, we have kids that have definitely gone through and families and parents that are just going to require more attention, they're going to require more help. And having somebody that's split between two buildings isn't really going to allow them to embrace all of the needs as they come. And, you know, I know we're working with the RISE program, I know that there's a lot of other things happening. But again, you know, I just, I think it's, it would be better if we could find a way to either add another counselor or something like that, you know, and not have to fall back on other people having to take on the access that, that can't be, you know, met by one counselor being absent two and a half days a week. So that's just my two cents, I just wanted to, you know, touch on that as well. I thank you all for your time, the plan, you know, I know it takes a lot of work to put one together. I'm doing it myself in my district. So thank you again and I appreciate everything you guys have done.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Christina Karamia, 465 Pompton Ave. I'm wondering if you could elaborate on the idea that the health department would be involved should a child show signs of COVID at school? And is there a possibility that a child would be tested without parental consent?
So we're, we are not, so that's a great question. We are not, we, we do not test children, we do not test staff. The way that the local health department and the county health department would get involved is based on any of the symptoms that a child could possibly exhibit that would be related to COVID-19. We will be notifying them, they will then be taking our, they will then be taking, we will be taking their lead on where and how to move forward. And that would involve the, the parent or caregiver at all times. But we, as a school district, will not test our students or our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to make a comment?
I have one more question, Alyssa Savlakis, 82 Winding Way again. What's the sensitivity in terms of testing of closing the school down? I mean, if, if somebody comes in and they're positive, are we just shutting down that classroom, that group? Or are we shutting down all of the schools?
So that, that will be decided in collaboration with the local health department in the, in the county health department. That won't be a decision that will be made in isolation. It is extremely important that we make those decisions together with our medical professionals. They will give us guidance on what to do and you will be assured that the communication about what will happen and what those next steps will be, that will be coming from me. So that, again, is a collaborative partnership that we have with our local health departments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make a comment?
One, one quick question, Joe Abaleo, 59 Westland Road. Now seeing the plan and that August 14th deadline to determine if you're going to, you know, which option in terms that you're going to, you're going to select for your child. Is there some flexibility with that date? Just because, you know, obviously as working parents, the, you know, picking up your child in, in the middle of, you know, half a day at 12:30 may not work. So if we needed time ourselves to plan for childcare or to interview possible in-home support to keep our, our son home virtually, is there some flexibility with that date? If it took a couple of days for us to, you know, to go through some people that we're potentially going to bring in, in the home for our child? Or is that a dead, is that a strict deadline, that 14th?
Well, it's a pretty hard deadline based on the fact that we have to prepare for what we're going to be doing in each of our buildings and how our, each of our teachers are going to prepare for the instruction, just having that knowledge. I understand the, the issues that each family will have with, with childcare. So my suggestion is, you know, try to make the best decision that you can possibly make by the 14th. If something does change between then and the beginning of school, obviously things change, right? So, you know, you know, I, I don't want to say that we can be flexible with a couple of days and, and another week or so, because that does impede on our abilities to go and prepare and provide your child with the best education that we could possibly provide them with. But if something does change and there's something major that happens in, in someone's life, because this does happen, this is life, we will definitely take that into consideration. But we definitely need by the 14th, a, a good number, so we can start to work with that with our, our staff.
You know, I, I definitely get it from the schools and, and again, my wife and I are both in education. So we know and, and we're on our own schedules with our own districts. But, you know, it's, you know, it's only giving families nine days now to find childcare, you know, or somebody to pick up your, your child in a half a day. That's why I was just wondering. But I mean, if, you know, if, if necessary, I could reach out to, you know, the school, the school principal or yourself if, if we, okay, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anybody else was wishing to make a comment? Okay, I'm going to.
Hi, I just have one more, sorry, it's Bonnie Fiala again.
No problem, go right ahead.
Just a question with the two cohorts. Did, has each classroom been looked at as far as if every student in Group A and Group B decide to come in person? Is there enough room for that amount of desks to be socially distanced, six feet, you know, in all directions?
Yeah, that was the purpose of why we split that up because, you know, we, we have a higher concentration of last names that begin with M. And as you, as you go down to the bottom of the alphabet, they become less. And so therefore, we couldn't include that within our first cohort because then we would have overage. So based on our, our A through L and our M through Z, excuse me, that was the reason why that decision was made to split the cohort into those particular categories. And when we look at each of our individual classrooms, some of our classrooms can, can house more, more desks spaced six feet side by side, front to back, more than others. So we've, we've taken all of those parameters into consideration as when to, how to split those cohorts up and what would work in the best interest of those students and staff.
Okay. And just like going, I'm sorry, I know I keep going back to it, that's why I don't want to take up more time. So maybe if, if we could do it, you know, school-based, it might be better. But my youngest is in preschool and how are you going to now get desks and they're sitting six feet apart in a desk for four hours? I mean, I know you're going to utilize outside, but, you know, the bulk, like we said, of preschool is interacting with each other and socialization. So I'm just trying to get a, a better sense if I'm doing, you know, my child more harm than good, sending them to school in this type of an environment, which unfortunately we're dealing with.
I hear that, I, I understand that. And so I, I want us to try to think about how, you know, what we know preschool to be is there's a lot of collaboration on carpet time. There's a lot of collaboration, especially when we're doing art projects. A lot of that, it's, it's, it's not possible to happen during this time. So we're going to have to look at it in a very, in a very traditional way where, yes, you will look at students being placed six feet apart. And I, I can't sit here and tell you that, that is a right or a wrong decision for you. It's just something that you're going to have to discuss with your family and do what you feel is best for them based on, on the information that I'm able to provide to you. This is, you know, when we talk about this plan, school is, is, was not intended to happen this way, but we are working within parameters of, of this. And, you know, a lot of pre-K is, is a social emotional component. And there's, there's a lot of problem solving that happens for students. So that might look, that may look, it, it can still happen, but it will look very different than what you and I both know it to be. So when you're making that decision, you do have to take those into consideration just based on those facts. It won't look the same and there will be, there, there, there needs to be time where students can get up, they can move around, but that time, and, and we anticipate our staff taking advantage of the outside and being able to, to move around in that way and developing some new practices based on their pedagogy. But what we know it to be won't, it won't be that way. So I want, I want to be very transparent and upfront with you so you can make a, a good, educated and conscious decision.
Right, no, I do appreciate that. And just possibly maybe when you do have a mock schedule, it could maybe be broken down a little bit more specific by, you know, either grade level or clusters of grade levels to kind of get, you know, a very clear picture of what the day would look like. Because I do feel like there are definitely more questions than answers right now in every district. And I do feel very strongly that, you know, the phase and program would be the best way to go just because unfortunately, a lot of these questions, you know, everyone can't really answer right now. And it's kind of like a wait and see game. But I do appreciate, you know, you taking all my questions.
Sure, absolutely, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meetings, August 18th. I'm not sure where at this point, depending on how many people are allowed in a room. So same time, 6:30 for exec session, 7:30 regular. Following me would be September 15th, again, 6:30 executive, 7:30 regular. I know everybody still has a lot of questions, so that's why we have the, the page set up. It's why we have the separate email set up. Obviously, people know how to, to reach our, our new superintendent. And speaking of our new superintendent, I just want to point out that today is only his third official day on the job. And I think he did a remarkable job, given the new normal. And we are very pleased that he's joined our team, hopefully he comes back tomorrow. And, and we're very excited to, to work with him. So thank you, Tony, very much, we appreciate it. And I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga. Mrs. Pandoria.
Hi.
Mr. Shoner.
Hi.
Yes, the meeting is over, everybody have a good night and, and have a good evening, everyone. Thank you, bye-bye.